Where's our county administrator? Oh, there he is.
He's the one with the big boot.
All right.
All right, board members, staff. We will now call the Amherst County Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop to order. And the time is 4:25, 5:26. And we'll turn it over to Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank you for being here with us. And first, I want to thank staff who stayed here longer than we'd anticipated. We're sorry that it took longer to get to this point. But just a reminder, staff, we started this process in the fall, the budget process, and start working through budgets, getting requests in, asking questions of staff, trying to narrow down the problems, the things that are good, that are bad, that are needed, that are not needed. So this is a long, long process. So staff pushes this, they do a lot of work, there's a lot of work behind the scenes to even get to this point. First, I want to start with staff and thanking them for all that they do to get us here. Tonight, we are going to, we've asked Pierce Group, who's our benefits consultant, to be here with us. They're going to do a presentation tonight to start things off. One of the, one of the drivers of our budget, is a difficult driver that I'll get into when I get into my presentation, is the rising cost of insurance. They're here tonight to answer questions. I did not ask them to stay longer after their presentation, so if you have questions of them, if we could ask them while they're here. They'll start the presentation, do that. After they're done and they've answered your questions, I'm going to do a budget presentation on both the projected revenues and the operating budget. And then I would ask the take questions to answers after that, and then we can go back and forth through my slides. But I would like to get through them. So if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Pierce Group, unless you have any other questions for me before we get started.
Nope.
Okay. Pierce Group, please.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm David Charland, and I'm the Vice President of Employee Benefits at Pierce Group. And with me today is Gray Hooker. He's the Vice President of our Consulting Services. And I first want to start by thanking you all for allowing us to work with you, your employees, and the leadership team here at Amherst. The leadership team more than meets us halfway, and it's been a pleasure to serve, and we realize you have choices, so thank you for affording us this opportunity. Just a brief history before I turn it over to Gray Hooker. Last fall, we stayed one step ahead of the insurance carrier that you were with that exited the market, and we did a formal RFP last fall to the market, which included responses from Anthem, Centerra, and other providers. And we were fortunate to move July 1 of 2024 at a premium decrease of approximately 4% to Anthem, keeping your benefits rich and intact with lower deductibles, low copays, and choice within the network offerings. And that was effective July 1 of 2024. So we have about five months of utilization, claims data based on consumption. And Gray is going to work, walk through current enrollment and demographic profile, consumption through the claims dataset that we have, talk about any high-cost drivers to the plan, and then where we are relative to plan options and alternates, and what we've gotten back for market check. So thank you once again for the opportunity, and I just wanted to turn it over to Gray.
Good evening. As David said, what we're going to do today is look at the year-to-date. I want to start out by saying, anytime we move to a new carrier, the lag time that we have, and this is since we don't have a lot of history built up with Anthem, we did not get to start getting this data in until about the 1st of January. So you're going to see tonight data through five months of experience. We start the process with all carriers when we are shopping renewals at about this process. So we started about 60 days early with three months of experience. And as we go through this, you'll see that, you know, I'm going to tell kind of a story of how we got here, where we are now, where we're going to go. With that, we'll go to the first slide. So this is your demographic information. And the reason demographic information is very important to carriers is they want to look for things like average age, they want to see stability, they want to see the male-female ratio of your group. These all are elements that make up the underwriting process. And here at Amherst, you have excellent demographics. You are considered a small group with 227 employees. You have right at 400 total members. That's the employees plus the dependents that are on your plan. Your average age is 33, which I dare say is one of the youngest groups that I've spoken to this year. You have 52% female members and 48% male members. We see more in public sector, about a 60-40 shift either way. So you being 50-50 for the long term speaks well to your demographics. Year-to-date, as I said, 24-25 plan year. We have currently five months of experience. And we like to break that down in utilization by setting to see where your claims dollars are being spent. So far this year, we have spent around $264,000 in inpatient stays. Outpatient is your largest spend year-to-date at $453,000 in paid claims. Professional services, that's just going to the doctor, going to get x-rays, all the things that, that your employees do every day, is $335,000. So far, your pharmacy spend is about $211,000 for a total of $1.26 million so far this year. That's all claims being in, not counting the ones that are incurred but not yet paid. The next slide breaks that down into a pie chart that gives us the percentage of spend, and also down at the, at the left-hand corner gives us benchmarks based on national datasets that will tell you where you should be in an overall healthy running health plan. You'll see that our inpatient claims are right on the benchmark at 21% so far this year. 20% or less is the benchmark. Outpatient claims, which is your largest one, is 36%, but still a few points below the benchmark. And as we all know, outpatient services are less expensive to perform than being inpatient in the hospital. Your pharmacy, we look for it to be 20% or less. Your pharmacy is at 17%. I speak at about 30 to 35 of these type of meetings a year. So far this year, your pharmacy spend as a percentage of overall healthcare spend is one of the lowest that I've seen. We are typically seeing 35 to 40% of, of medical spend now go to pharmacy. So so far, what this tells me, if these were all of the datasets that I had, that we're running pretty good. Okay? So the next one is the providers that were used. And now we're going to start to see the individual claims come to play, and how they come to play, and, and kind of tell you the storybook of where we are year-to-date. Your top providers on inpatient is University of Virginia Rector at $154,000 and Centra in Philadelphia. You may be saying, why Philadelphia? Well, we're, we don't get specific information on, on claimants because of protective health information. This tells me because of the nature of the claim, which was an injury, that perhaps this was someone that was traveling. The good news, as you'll see in a few minutes, is that claim, these claims were paid in-network, which is because the Anthem Network now spreads over 10 states and is, and is covered throughout the country. So anywhere that your folks travel, it is considered an inpatient claim. Outpatient procedures, the number-one center was Centra Health in Philadelphia at $359,000. The rest of your providers are all local providers, which we like to see for regular routine care and everyday care. So except for that one anomaly, your employees are using local carrier, local providers for their services. The next slide is probably the most important. We break down the large claim report. Normally, we have two types of health plans and, and two outcomes. One outcome is we have a group of employees who are heavy utilizers of the health plan. Everyone's using it, and they're using it a lot. And on the other side of health plans, we have what we call a shock-loss health plan, where we have just a few claimants that have had serious diseases or serious injuries that make up the majority of the claims. And the latter is kind of where you are so far this year. So our, our number-one type of claim is an injury. And you'll see here where a prosthetic device was implanted at $209,000. A lot of that work has been done on an outpatient basis. The second claim is health status. That is a fancy term, just to say, these are folks that are going to doctors and having all kinds of tests run to see really what's wrong with them, and they're going back and forth to the doctor. However, it also is a musculoskeletal type of claim. The rest of them, the good thing is we don't have really any malignant cancers on here yet. We don't have anything that I feel like, at my first glance at this about a month ago, a lot of these claims are one-time incidents and maybe not incidents in the future that will be ongoing year after year after year. Because that's the other thing we have to look at as underwriters and consultants. I will say that even though really the top three claimants are the majority of the high-cost claimants, we do have, we know of two other outstanding claims that are going to be paid out before the end of the year. And the underwriters for Anthem are keenly aware of that as well. So all of that data is being looked at now. They really get granular with it as far as what the conditions on the ground are now. Any questions on this slide?
Board members?
All right. The next one, we like to look at by paid amount, all of the type of claims that we're seeing in frequency. Again, injury and poisoning, 99% of the time is going to be injury is number one. That health status claim is number two. Musculoskeletal is number three. Circulatory system is, is down at number four, and in most groups, we see that at one or two. Digestive system, ill-defined conditions actually is exactly as it sounds. They're going back and forth to the doctor, trying to get diagnosed, and they can't figure out what's wrong with you. And that, that's, that made this list. The other ones are the things that we are seeing more and more, such as respiratory system ailments, behavioral health, and certain nervous system is hitting our top-10 list a lot more. So again, when I look at this, it tells me that these are a few shock-loss claims that are getting the results through very early in the year.
So you got, go back. You've got that under the conditions. You've got that under per member per month, right?
That's a per member per month cost. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's a very good question.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. So the next is our total year-to-date health expenses. And you'll see this goes from start date of July of '24 through November of '24. We expect to receive the December claims in the next week or so, so we'll have better data. And again, just to reiterate, we started getting this data really right after the first of the year because of the claims lag of Anthem taking you over. But this is an unusual one. You'll see right in July, the total loss ratio for July with 216, or $223,000 in expenses, $216,000 in premium, you started out the year at 103% loss ratio. So 3% over the premium that was collected. August was really the shock month. That's when the injury occurred that we spoke of. You had a $500 and $1,000 in total expenses, but only $221,000 of premium to cover those. So you finished at $226,000, 226% loss ratio. Then we started to see a little evening out after that. And in a shock-loss type of claim year, that's what you're going to see. We finished in the, in the third month at 60% loss ratio, the second month at 93, and in November, we finished at 83. So the total, so far this year, you had total expenses of $1,263,000, premium of $1,121,000. That gives you a total net loss ratio of 113%. So as Anthem started to look at this about 60 days ago, you know, they had 103, 226, and 60. It didn't look nearly as good as it does today. And I can report to you that although we're reporting tonight some suggestions on how to get increases that we've gotten with your first renewal to mitigate those, they have opened the door for us to speak to them all the way up until renewal time as this data improves, and we certainly hope that it does.
And renewal time, renewal date is when?
July 1. July 1.
But because we went out of cycle with Anthem, we'll just get back in the cycle this year because we went back, we went to the back in the fall, right? Because we jumped ship early, right? Do I remember that correctly?
That, go ahead.
We transitioned to Anthem July 1, which was your historical plan anniversary. We just got ahead of the carrier that you had exiting the market, so that's why we did the RP well ahead of that, so you all weren't caught off guard.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, David.
Can I jump in? For our clarity, we need to have it done by April 1 for open enrollment.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yes. And thank you for that, Jeremy. We, that's why we were here tonight, so that you can adopt a plan, and we'll get to those plan options in just a few minutes. But we did get way ahead of the marketplace when your former carrier decided to exit the market. But, but to be clear, we started with an effective date of July 1 of 2024 with Anthem. The next page is really just a, a re-tally of the same projected expenses versus the claims, except it breaks it down in medical claims, which are $1,052,000, and your pharmacy claims so far at $211,000, which is where we stand today. Right now, where we stand with the renewal, our renewal, if we kept all of the benefits exactly the same, with Anthem, they've offered a one-year contract at a 33.5% rate increase. This is largely due to the fact, again, they started their, their underwriting process about 60 days ago with limited historical data and looking at paying out all of these claims in the first two or three months. We do have two alternates that we're going to look at today. I apologize for only one of them to be, being on this slide, but one alternate plan will reduce that to a 20% increase in overall premiums. We're also going to show you one tonight that gets at around 15% on an average basis. We also went to the market, and so far, we've received one declined quote from Centerra. And we are anticipating a quote to come in from the Local Choice Plan. The Local Choice is a large pool plan that's been around in Virginia for 40 years, has approximately 365 public entities that are in the pool, and they've agreed to provide a quote to us by the end of this week. And then we are going to provide that to staff as soon as we can on a spreadsheet, so you have something to compare it to. On the renewal options, and I'll go as slowly as I can with this, but it basically entails taking your current plan and increasing the deductible. So when we, when we're at this place in a renewal, and we don't really have any wiggle room to argue a best case to the carrier, and we don't have a lot of carriers coming to market in order to mitigate that 33.5%, then we have to start looking at creative ways, working with our benefit analyst team and the carriers, to say, okay, what, what can we do to change this plan and overhaul it so that we can mitigate these, these huge increases? So they've offered us two alternatives, and I'm going to go through the changes, and the changes highlighted in here. So currently, on your PPO plans, you have Health Keepers, which is more of a, it used to be a restrictive network, now it is a more open network with Anthem. And you have their standard Anthem Network, which is called Key Care. You offer both plans. You have participation that is kind of even. Right now, you have in the Health Keepers plan about 70 employees and their families. We have 140 in the Key Care plan. So the changes are primarily in the deductibles and out-of-pockets and the copays. So you'll see in Alternative 1, where you currently have a $20 copay to go to your primary care physician, $40 to go to a specialist. That would move to $30 for the, for the primary care and $50 for the specialist. That is the same across all plans. You would go from a $500 individual deductible to a $1,000 deductible in, in Alternative 1, and we're just going to stick to Alternative 1 right now. The family deductible would go from $1,000 to $2,000. The individual out-of-pocket is $2,500 currently. It's the maximum. It would go to $4,500. And the family out-of-pocket would go to $9,000. The other changes is physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy, where the, the employees now have a $20 copay. That would now go to your deductible and out-of-pocket limits. And there's a slight change in, in the prescription drug copays. Most of your drugs are generic drugs. They would go from a $10 to a $15 copay. $30 for Tier 2. Currently, $50 for Tier 2 with the alternate plan. And it would go up to $300, where right now, you have a $250 benefit.
Is there any way to make that bigger?
Yeah.
I, I'm going blind. I can't see it.
I wasn't sure if y'all had hard copies already or not.
No, it's first I've seen it. Has anybody else seen it?
Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. I thought you might have escorted back.
And we're currently on the, about the third from the end.
That's what I want to see.
Copy.
Okay, thank you.
So if you were to adopt Alternative 1 with these deductible and out-of-pocket changes, then that 33.5% increase of over all the rates would come down to 20%. For instance, and this is just the gross rates, the Finance Office also has a separate sheet, I believe, with the contributions that they're working on. So this is just the rates overall for the plan. So the individual goes 653 to 763. You have employee plus one, that is $1,241 would go to 1487. And the employee and family would go from 1587 to 2261. So these are the best ways to dramatically change the outcome of your renewal. I can tell you that in my 32 years of experience, changes in benefits are easier to swallow somewhat than are huge rate increases for the employee to take home. I'll also tell you that, that your benefits after evaluation are extremely impressive. We haven't seen $500 deductible plans in a very long time in the private sector, and your rates are very, very competitive with your peers. So is there any questions on Alternative 1?
When we negotiated with Anthem last year, we didn't request or think, or maybe they just didn't offer a moratorium on a rate hike. Maybe they didn't, did we discuss that with them?
We always request that. Typically, in first-year plans especially, they do not offer a maximum first-year increase. And the main reason for that is when a, when a carrier takes over a group on a fully insured basis on the first year, they're really only looking at nine months of, of gross claims liability normally, because the old carrier is paying incurred but not yet reported claims. So a couple of things happened here. From my old underwriting perspective, they guessed wrong on incurred but not yet reported claims. It was they paid out more in the first three months, I think, than they anticipated. But to answer your question, on fully insured plans, it's very rare to get a rate guarantee past one year. I haven't seen one in many years, but that's an excellent question. Any other questions? With that, we'll move to Alternative 2. Alternative 2 involves taking your individual deductible from $500 to $1,500. The family deductible would go from $1,000 to $3,000. The individual out-of-pocket maximum would go from $2,500 to $5,250. And the family out-of-pocket maximum would go from $5,000 to $10,500. The, a lot of the things that are deductible and coinsurance are still that way. The same change to physical and occupational therapy, removing the copay and going to deductible and copay. And the prescription drug changes would be virtually the same. On the Health Keepers Plan, that would get that increase down to 16.2%. On the Key Care Plan, it would actually take it down to 14.4, so kind of a blended increase of about 15%. So you'd save about five more percentage points. The high-deductible health plan that we haven't mentioned yet only has 19 participants, and they are standing pat because of that low participation at the 35% rate increase for that one. But the rates are very low for your employees on that plan. Any questions on that plan? The main difference is you're going to take the deductibles and out-of-pocket higher for the employees in order to save about 5% more on the premiums. There are no questions. The next page is just your dental and vision plans. They are on a rate hold. The dental plan is on a rate hold for an additional year. And the Anthem Blue View Vision Plan is on a rate hold for four years. So there will be no change to those premiums. Any questions on anything we've gone over?
Yeah, go back. You were talking about the high deductible with an HSA.
Mm-hmm.
So, but then I don't see what percentage that would be. Is it because, and what, what reason did you give that nobody wanted to participate in it, none of our employees want to participate?
I think, I think the reason is you, your rates that your employees pay for your PPO plans are, are very, very generous. And when, when most people start to migrate to high-deductible health plans with HSA, it's because the premiums that they pay out of their paychecks have become exorbitantly unaffordable, which is a sad fact of healthcare, but it is. And that's my best educated reasoning as to why we haven't had many people migrate over there. In high-deductible health plans, your youngest employees, it's very, it's very popular to them because they don't want to have to pay anything out of their paycheck. PPO plans are still very, very popular with middle-aged employees because they have more ailments.
Board members, any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah?
So, it's brought to Mr. Bryant, or Mr. Bryant. So, so you go with Alternative 1. What's the cost to the county, what's the cost to the employee?
Presentation that I give to you.
Talking about it now.
Okay, well, hold on.
I have the one for, hang on. Well, maybe. Oh, it's on. If you go with the 1,500, currently estimated, if we increase the employee...
That's Alternative 2.
Alternative 2. If we go with that one, the, and an increase to the employee's share of the cost, it's, I've gotten it down to 280, 286,800 out-of-pocket. Well, sort of. If... There are a multitude of scenarios. We have picked a couple in the presentation. It's about 400, and if, if we don't, it depends on if you charge the employee, how much you charge them, and, and so we kind of, I've, I had to narrow it down. If you go with the $1,000 deductible, I believe it was like $448,000 out of the county to pay that for employ, 418, I'm sorry, not 448, 418,000. And that still includes some, increased payment from the employee.
By how much?
It depends on the plan. I have a simplified slide for Mr. Bryant to go over, but it's, it's an increase to the cost on the HSA this time. It's a reduction in the contribution to the HSA. There's an increase to the, every plan except for the Health Keepers employee-only.
All right, so, wow. Okay, so what, what I would like to... So what, what I would like to know, you can tell me now or tell me later, on each one of these different options, is how much is it going to cost our employees, right? Out of their pocket every month versus their higher deductibles and blah, 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 and how much it's going to cost the county, right?
Mr. Bryant, you've got that because I asked for that yesterday. So you've got something there, don't you?
We have what's in the proposed budget, the scenario that's in the proposed budget. If you change anything tonight, it changes.
Well, and we're also waiting on the local choice. So I think we're going to need to come back with a more comprehensive at the next meeting because we want to compare, we want also, we want to compare these options to the local choice, right?
That's correct.
And we, we know they're going to propose.
Yes.
Okay. But let's, hey, let's, let's shift gears for a minute. Let's talk about the local choice for a minute. I was, we're speaking on hypotheticals right now. What, what are the differences in coverage with the local choice compared to, to what we're looking at with these alternatives?
Local choice, that's an excellent question. The local choice provides five different health plan options, and the entities, whether it be schools or city-county governments, get to choose which ones to offer. They do offer, what you currently offer is a $500 deductible plan. Very few entities are continuing to offer that one. They also offer a $1,000 deductible plan, and they offer a $3,200 getting ready to go up HSA plan with a high deductible. So they even have still on their books a $250 deductible plan, but I do not have any of our clients that, that offer that one. So the plans are very comparable to what you have always offered. I, I call them pretty rich benefits. What you can achieve with the local choice, and, and, I don't want to stand here and make any promises because I haven't seen the quote yet, but we have probably more, we serve more clients in Virginia than probably any other consulting firm that has the local choice because of their 40 years of stability. Stability is the key word. If you were to make that move, you will see less swings in your renewal process, but there are rules to play by. And the rules to play by are that you have to do open enrollment when they tell you to do open enrollment. And you're going to get your renewal all at the same time you get everyone else's. If you leave the local choice, you can't get back for three years. Just, just rules like that, that some folks don't want to give up that freedom. But I can report to you that if you'd been with the local choice this year, you would have gotten an 18% increase. That's the highest increase they gave any of their groups. So they try their best to cap the maximum increase. They...
But as far as service goes with the local choice compared to what we're talking about now, so I mean, are there any special hoops that a, that a employee needs to go through if they're in this Philadelphia situation, they're completely out of network, that they, that it's going to be just a cumbersome process to be able to get healthcare?
It's a good question. And, but the Phil, now, to be, to be fair, the Philadelphia claim was in-network because of the broad network.
I just use that as an example.
Yeah.
I mean, it could have been a hospital that's not in-network.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just as an example.
That's a great question. So right now, currently, the local choice self-funded health plan is administered by Anthem. They have the same network that your employees currently do. They, in fact, most employees think they're with Anthem. A lot of folks don't realize that Anthem and the local choice are two separate entities. And Anthem has been the TPA and insurance provider for 40 years. Full disclosure, the local choice right now is in a bid situation for their own health plan, and they've gone to RFP for the first time in 40 years. And the governor's office instigated that RFP really just to keep everybody honest, is what I believe happened. It shouldn't have really taken 40 years. That RFP process is coming to a close, and that award will be awarded, I'm told, within the next two weeks. If I were handicapping it, I would say Anthem has about a 90% chance of keeping it because they've done a good job. And in the renewals that we just handled for our clients, we had excellent results. To be honest and fair to this committee, when you have, when you have 227 employees, it gets harder and harder and harder to go it alone in a fully insured environment in Virginia. And that's just an old country boy that's handled a lot of them lately.
But to be clear, the providers that our employees have used under Anthem would be the same providers under total choice, right?
That is exactly right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's what we need to know.
That, that's, that's important.
Yeah. It's really synonymous. Most folks do not see the difference. They get, they get an Anthem card. They get the same contact numbers, the same Anthem reps take care of them. And so there's really no change to the employee except getting a new card. But we'll have to wait to see what the rates come back at. I can tell you from, from your, keep in mind, if you would, at the pleasure of the board, as you make these decisions, your peers, you, you have very rich benefits in comparison to a lot of your peers. I'd say the average deductible today is at least $1,000. I know I have one school system or school division and city government here in Virginia where they only have a high deductible health plan, and it's either $3,000 or $5,000 deductibles. And that's, changes in deductibles and out-of-pockets together are the best way to mitigate increasing cost.
So when did you say you would have that quote from the local option?
Yeah. Yeah. We've been told March the 6th, the end of this week.
Okay.
And we normally have a 24-hour turnaround in getting that spreadsheeted and back to your staff so that they can start to evaluate that with our help.
Okay. Any other questions?
The only, and I don't want to prolong this because I know we've got a lot to do, but you guys are the professionals in this stuff, and I know you probably know this better than the rest of us do. I know just enough to be dangerous, but we, we've had discussions in the past about doing things in, in conjunction with the school system, right? The school system is self-insured, correct? What, what would a scenario, obviously, I think we're, we're way too late in the game to even be discussing that for this coming fiscal year. However, moving forward, what would, are there, well, I've got a bunch of questions, but what would be the benefit of us partnering with the school system as a whole to do some platform such as that?
That's an ex, that's an excellent question. And we have several of our clients that have gone down that road. Some very successful, some not so successful. Typically, the schools have more employees, so they bring more employees into your pool. But you would still be an individual self-funded pool. So the number one thing is going to be the cooperation between the schools and the county. If one sees, one entity is saying, okay, they're, they're on fire from a claims perspective, so they're jumping over here for, for safety, they're probably not going on to do a partnership. And you don't know if they're going to say, we need you to contribute an upfront reserve from the county's budget so that we can put that in our reserve, which could, that, that question normally comes up. I've been involved with dozens of groups that have set up self-funded plans, and it's the upfront investment of the reserve that always seems to be the stumbling block. Now, if you combine, and I agree, it would be a one-year process. I would start to have those conversations as soon as July 2nd, okay? And you, and, and you can involve us. I'm involved with one right now outside of Richmond where a city government and a school system is trying to do the exact same thing.
Yeah. Let me interrupt you just a minute.
Yes, ma'am.
So we've started those conversations. Mr. Bryant has reached out to the superintendent. It's too late to do it now, obviously.
Last one.
Yeah. But those conversations are starting, so we will, we'll just wait to hear back from the superintendent.
Fair enough.
And we can offer any assistance that you need on that since we do have vast experience helping folks do that.
Any further questions?
No, ma'am.
Martin, you good? It's, it's my personal opinion, I mean, this, it's bad, but every employer that I know is going through this. And eventually, you know, everybody's got to have skin in the game.
Well, I think we still got a bunch of questions, right? But not so much for these guys, but from, from our people.
Yeah, for our people.
I mean, that, that's where, that's where the rubber's going to meet the rubber.
Yep. All right. Thank y'all. We really appreciate your help.
Thank you.
And I think they're going to leave, so do you have any, any last-minute questions while we have them? Hold them hostage.
If we do, we'll give them to you, Jeremy, and you can...
I can...
...fish them out later, okay?
Okay. Yeah. Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Next.
All right. Would you like to hear from me now? Okay. So what, what I'm going to present to you is the FY '26, both the revenue projections and operating budget. I'd like to try to get through this presentation so it's whole, and then if we can, we can go back at any point, but I think it makes more sense if we can try, if I can run through it from start to beginning to the end, and then, and then get back to any questions that you have. Okay. Thanks again. And thanks for staff. I also want to thank Stacy McBride for all the hard work that she does, working nights and weekends to try to put this together. And a lot of people came to my rescue when I was down and out with Mankel by working through her. So I appreciate all the extra work that people did to help me out as well. Okay. Let's see. So we're going to start with looking at revenue highlights. So we are estimating real estate tax at an incremental 1.5% growth rate. Other property taxes, which includes personal property, machinery and tools, and a myriad of other at around 2% growth. Adding those up, operating revenue increased from FY '25 to 2.5% or 1.5 million. That doesn't include supplemental or CIP request. So approximately 1.5 million. Generally, these estimates remain conservative overall and remain consistent with our practices that we've done in the past. Mr. Taylor at Davenport gave a fantastic presentation for our landfill financing that, that talked about the, the, the real estate assessment. I'm super happy that he came here today and did that because I think that actually brought us all up to speed on where we stood financially in a lot of places. Okay. This slide is actually a similar slide that Davenport provided to you, and this shows that our tax rate for real estate is at 0.16. This is really just to illustrate where we stand to some of our peers in Virginia. Certainly counties being higher than us, counties being lower than us at our tax rate. Again, Mr. Taylor went over that at our, our meeting earlier, so I won't belabor on this. Just kind of shows where we stand. This also shows for our real estate tax per $100 at 61 cents, our FY... Our FY '25 budget revenues are $15,375,000. We often ask, what's the value of a penny? The value of a penny in Amherst County is $252,049. So that's what one penny buys you today in Amherst County. Our personal property tax rate is $3.45, projecting approximately $11 million. Mills tax, 6%, $2 million. Keep in mind, part of that goes to schools, that 2%. Machinery and tools is 2.2 million, and mobile homes at $85,000. Goes to debt, yes. I'm sorry. So let me continue. We, we put this together just, just for illustration purposes, okay? So if, if an average home, and I'm not, my presentation, I'm, I've given you a balanced budget. We're not, I'm not proposing that we raise taxes. If you did, this is, if you take an average home value of $250,000 at our tax rate of 61 cents, that's $1,525 a year. If you increase it by one penny, so one penny on an average home of $250,000 goes to $1,550 per year, that's an increased cost of $25 a year. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? Okay. Okay. This slide shows our revenue analysis and projections, projecting in FY '26 that real estate goes from last year at 50, or this current year at 15.4 million to 15.8. Other property taxes going from 13.8 to 14.6. And if, this slide, this information was sent to you. I won't go over each detail. This was in your packet that we emailed to you for your review. And again, we can come back to this, but if you'll allow me to move through this presentation, and then we'll come back to these. Okay. So this slide is just to illustrate visually what FY '24, '25, and '26, well FY, what FY '24 looked like, what the remaining projection of '25 will look like, and what proposed '26 will look like. And there's a visual illustration that, that generally speaking, in each of our buckets, if you will, for real estate, personal property, sales tax, other taxes, permits and fees are kind of holding steady. And state revenue all generally go up, whereas other local revenue and the use of other funds generally go down. If we want to get into the details on that, I'll turn that over to Ms. McBride to talk about those buckets. Okay? So some of the challenges in this year's budget, we've already gone over health, health insurance increase. We just learned that 33.5% increase. We have some options on the table. We're waiting on the local choice. What I, what I hope to do is bring that back to you at our next budget meeting. We have a budget meeting on March the 12th. I'd like to give you a comparison then of all of these Anthem options that we just received as well as the local choice, so we can look holistically at how all this comes together. Inflationary costs across all departments. Electric bills are certainly a driver, but you know, fuel and gas and all, all the other things that, that have gone up with inflation. Trying to fit in a 3% cost of living for all employees, that's not in the budget right now. I have not fit that in, but at this, into this presentation, I have some options that I'm going to give you on how we could do that, and I, I want your feedback. Increased use of jail, detention centers, and CSA services, and general of the maintenance and aging of buildings and equipment are, are certainly our operating budget challenges. I'm going to get into some greater details on that. I'm not going to go into great detail on this. This is, this is what we just went over with Pierce Group, but we've learned that we, we have some options, right? We have a $500 deductible plan that we can look at a, moving it to a $1,000 or 1,500, yeah, $1,000 or 1,500. I want to give you a more comprehensive review of how this will come together once we get that, the local choice. Staff cuts, and I would, again, thank you to staff on, on working through this, but of, of the requests that we received, of things that staff said that they needed, we then since went back before we presented this budget to you and cut approximately $500,000 to the original request. And as I mentioned to you earlier, at the moment, we have no COLA included in this budget. We did do a reduction to youth sports organizations from 5,000 to 2,500 in this budget. The papers that we gave you showed zero. We did find some funds that where we could put some back in, so we're going to make that change. But I just wanted to point out what, what I emailed to you had zero for, we cut that all the way back. We've, we've replenished it back to 2,500 per organization. And the ambulance, we are not able to also fit that in this year's operating budget, but we would recommend, just like we did last year, to use it out of the future fund one more year, trying to get to that real estate tax reassessment. That's our goal. So some of the big drivers in this budget, these, these are really the kind of the big things that were, were large requests. Public safety had an increase of 372,000. Brad Beam was fantastic in trying to work with us, and we recognize the, the needs and the challenges of public safety. This isn't just a ask because they need it. This is, this is a, a request that they need to keep things moving. The demands are real in Amherst County, and he's doing a good job to try to keep, keep things as low as he can, but they do need more money for funding. Technology driver, $94,000 has to do generally with software contracts. As we moved into RDA, there's now renewal contracts that we knew about. This doesn't come as a surprise, but this is a reality. Healthcare insurance increase, we put the 286,800 is for the 1,500 plan. Obviously, that even goes up if we put the $1,000 plan in. So that, this number is based on the 1,500 plan. Again, this could be, this could change with TLC, and we'll come back to you and sharpen that pencil on this number, but this is where it stands as of right now. Social services had $157,000 increase. Now, keep in mind, about approximately 2/3 of that's reimbursable, so that's not a real number, but that's, that's what's in the budget for now. And then law enforcement, including jail, detention, and sheriff's department, is $237,000 increase. So these were some of the bigger drivers for us in this budget. Just to break it down in a pie chart, other, all other personnel in the county is about 21% of your cost. Schools are costing us 28% of our budgets. Our committed funds and transfers is that little gray box that, or that gray pie shape of 5%. Sheriff, fire, and EMS, including personnel, is 24%. And other operating costs, that's everything else is 23%. So we, we've hit that mark, and we, this is, this is the year that our revenues meet our expenditures. We're there, and this is, this is, you know, this is the reality... And this is, you know, this is the reality of increased costs from a number of things. Personnel, increased personnel last year, services and increase in services, and revenues not changing much. As you're aware, our revenues are very modest. We have modest growth in Amherst County. We don't, we're not a fast-growing county. We're not a fast-developing county. And so we have modest growth in our revenues, but our expenditures have met this year. And that's why we're at this place where we're at. Let me actually back up. That trajectory for the revenues certainly can change, and expenditures, any that's changeable, but can change based on if any decisions are made with a reassessment, with equalization, and with decisions that are made like that in the future. These were some numbers that we put together. So how much does it cost to reduce the employee insurance cost? Not changing the cost to the employee. So we don't change the cost of the employee, and choosing the $1,500 deductible plan would cost an additional 163,000 in employer share. Changing to the $1,000 deductible plan and not changing the cost to the employee would cost an additional 282,000 in the employer share. Again, I wanna come back to you with something more comprehensive. We were giving you the best numbers that we had. And I'm gonna email, I see Mr. Martin, you're writing this down. I'm gonna email this spreadsheet, this slideshow to you after this presentation tonight, so you can look at it. Again, this isn't comprehensive because we don't have the local choice. We need to compare all that. So we don't, I don't wanna make any decisions on this yet. We're waiting for that. These numbers are not currently in the budget and would require a funding source. Okay, we tried to, just for illustrative purposes, provide you, we can run this 1,000 different ways, but we took an average employee that makes $50,000. If they get a 3% increase, they're gonna receive $1,500 more per year, okay? If they're using the healthkeepers, the PPO or the HSA that we compared it across. So let's take the healthkeepers and run it across. If you get a $1,500 pay increase, they're paying zero. They get $1,500 in their pocket. If they're on the PPO and their annual increase for the employees, $516, they walk away with $984. If we're able to fit a 3% raise in, this is just a scenario, okay? This is before taxes too. So remember, taxes will come out, it'll actually be less. The HSA, employees will pay an additional $792 if they receive the 3% increase. They have $708, again, before taxes. So just to illustrate, we're trying to keep in mind, plus their contributions to the HSA. What it's like for an employee worth 50,000. We know we can run this scenario a bunch of different ways, but wanted to do this one for illustrative purposes, okay? Okay, how much does a COLA cost? So to get everyone at a 1% cost of living adjustment is 221,033. A 2% is 242,000. And a 3% is 663,000, okay? These figures include funds that would be reimbursed from the comp board. SROs, you remember this was a challenge in last year's budget? This remains a challenge in this year's budget. The one expiring SRO grant position, we have included in the operating budget. It's included in the budget that we provided to you. The six SRO grant-funded positions awaiting funding approval. The state is only funding continuation grants, so funding is likely. We believe it's likely that we will get the six funded. But again, we won't know. And we do also have to keep in mind that these SRO grants for six positions expires at the end of this budget season. So we will have to deal with it next year, okay? Okay, so I told you at the beginning of this that I have some options. I can't tell you that these are the best options. This is a really difficult budget. I don't need an answer tonight because we have more information to bring to you with medical, but I want you to think about some things. These are some options on how we could potentially get to a COLA. We could suspend for one year the emergency service capital for one year. That's $118,000 that we put in that bucket. Currently, they have $330,000. That's an option. We've analyzed reducing services at three different convenience centers, which would create a savings of $74,000. I have an appendix if we wanna go to that and look at the details of that, but that is an option. We could save $74,000, but we would be reducing services. We could take leftover school bond funds and spread them out. We could use it one year, we could use it a couple years to pay for debt service. You recall, we had $1.2 million. We used $100,000 to fix Randy Nixon's windows at the Monroe Community Center. We have $1.1 million remaining, in fact, that we can take back from the schools. Potential dispatch funding from the comp boards, $150,000. Sheriff Ayers applied for, to put the dispatch positions under his umbrella with, we'll probably do some type of memorandum of understanding between Sheriff Ayers and Chief Beam. But by doing this, it was a strategic move on their part, this could bring in $150,000. We won't know until April. We did find out that comp board funding of 3% for salaries would supplant 96,000 of the salaries paid by the counties, and then we just did discover $3,000 more savings on March the 3rd to be used as needed. So let me get to my recommendations. I have two proposals right now to fund a 3% cost of living. And I'll tell you, the reason I'm fighting for a 3% cost of living is because the Consumer Price Index went up 2.9%. So cost of living's gone up. And if our medical insurance costs for our employees go up, I don't want anyone to go under. I want to try to swing a bat in their direction. So proposal A, we could use the $96,000 from the comp board funding. We could suspend $118,000 from the emergency services capital line for just one year. And we could actually take 448,000 from that debt, that 1.1 million from the schools, supplant that for debt service, and get us at our funding target of 663,100. That's an option. The other option is to use the, option B, on your right-hand side, is to use comp board funds at 96,000. And then again, use that school debt because we have 1.1 million that they can return back to us. We can use that for an additional year to also reach that goal of 663,100. I don't love it, it's not ideal. It's one-time funds to get the budget through this year. We've recognized that this was coming for some time where the revenues and the expenditures were gonna meet. We heard that from RT Taylor today with Davenport, withholding costs the way we've done. We've done a great job. And so this board has done, as RT Taylor told us today, a fantastic job of working through budgets without raising taxes. And I have an option here where we can work through budgets without raising taxes and support our staff. I'm hoping you see it as a win-win. If you don't like it, that's fine, we can go a different route. This is my recommendation. Right now, I have a proposal A and B. This will change some when I get the local choice. And what I hope to do is re-present some of this information to you at our March 12th meeting next week, once we have additional information. Okay, I am, okay, so next steps. We need to decide what health insurance options work best. We need to, do we continue to work for COLA? Do you want me to continue to work for COLA for our staff? And what changes would you like, would the board like to see in the options presented? What do you wanna see staff do? What can we do differently? What did we not give you tonight? That concludes my presentation. Please let me know if you have any questions.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Bryant. Board members, and I know everybody's got a lot of questions, a lot of questions. But I would encourage all of us to keep an open mind. Everything should be on the table. I mean, we're, we need to be creative, and just because we didn't do something for the last 10 years doesn't mean we shouldn't consider it now. But I just, everybody be open-minded, and there's no doubt in my mind that with the brain power here, that we will come up with something.
And I also wanna point out, we have all the staff here that's here to answer questions. If you have any specific departmental questions that you want additional information on.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I saw your option A and B. I really didn't like either one of them, but anyway, that's fine. So looking in your projected 26 budget, went through, and it's obvious where the $500,000 worth of cuts came from, right? So what I would suggest is an option C, is you send those departments back. And if it's not a fuel cost, okay? If it's not electricity cost, if it's not a true inflationary cost, don't raise your budget, right? And there should be no new staff positions in the budget hitting anywhere, or supplemental or otherwise. I don't think we can afford that this year.
The only one we took off was, and put in there was the SRO that is no longer grant.
You're not including SROs in that, are you?
Of course not, that's motherhood and apple pie.
I figured that was a safe one to roll in there.
You get my point, all right? The whole, look, I said this year after year after year. The supplemental budget thing, funding recurring costs with one-time money was gonna bite us in the butt. And guess what? It has bit us right up in the butt. Here we are today. So, I mean, I don't see us funding any new positions this year. I don't see us funding anything on the backs of our volunteers, which is taking that ESC money. That's sacrilege to me, all right? You know, but I would send everybody right back. We had to do this once before. You know, if it's not a true inflationary cost, don't increase your budget, all right? And there's a bunch of them in here that's not highlighted in yellow. I went through and highlighted every last one of them, all right? There's no reason for it, all right? What concerns me is keeping our insurance costs low to our employees, right? And the cost of living, there definitely should not be an increase of insurance cost to our employees if we don't do a cost of living, all right? Absolutely not. Yeah. So that's where I would send you back, is looking at the line items in the budgets and putting them back at what they were last year, no higher, okay? The other question I have is on the dispatch. If Sheriff Ayers wants to get that grant, who would the dispatchers report to? Do they report to the sheriff, or do they still report to Chief Beam?
Yeah, what we had talked about, and none of it's been worked out, is that we could set up some type of memorandum of understanding. They would be under Sheriff Ayers' umbrella, but with a memorandum of understanding, they would be actually overseen by Chief Beam for the comp board purposes, so we could get the funding.
Okay.
Sheriff Ayers, Chief Beam, did I say that wrong?
That's correct.
But yeah, that's, I'd like for you to go back to zero, not zero, but previous year budgets on all the departments, unless it's a true inflationary cost. Start from there. I don't think, we obviously don't know enough about the insurance yet until we get the other costs, but... That's my initial thoughts.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I got numerous questions, so I'm sure everybody anticipated that. First question for you two with, in, well, I'm gonna get to revenues in just a second, but let's talk about what Mr. Martin was just talking about. On the department request versus the county admin recommends two sections on the budget on the expenditure side, did you guys have to make any adjustments to the O and Ms. before this number here that we see?
I don't understand your question. Can you repeat the question?
All right, on the expenditure side, for each department.
Yes, sir.
Did you guys, in conjunction with the department heads, have to make any adjustment? Were there any adjustments to the O and M prior to what we're seeing in this column right now?
Yes.
All right, how much was that?
The $500,000.
And where was the $500,000 spread throughout, like, everybody?
Every department. I'll go back and check, there may be one or two that just didn't have enough budget to look at.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, some budgets, well, I mean, you can't, it's not apples to apples.
If you look at the museum, you have one director.
That's correct, I get that.
Just like this much.
Yeah, I completely get that.
But I'm saying, I met with probably 15 to 20 different people the week that he was working from home to work through their asks and evaluate where we could cut things. And it came down to that as the amount that we cut out overall.
So I think that's a pretty important question, Mr. Martin, because now, now we're looking at two different pictures, right? So there's already been cuts before we see this, and now...
Well, I was just gonna give an example. So let's just take building maintenance, for an example. The amended budget in fiscal year '25 that we're in now is 674,597. That's what was approved last year, right? They requested 700...
732.
732,097, right? But the county administrator recommended 712,597. So that's still 35, 40,000 more dollars than what it was last year. Is that electricity? Is that fuel? What is it?
Well, we kinda, I mean, I will...
Well, actually, I would like to bring Nate or Phillip up because they have a number of projects that I know they brought to our attention that were needs.
Well, let me just say this. We went through not just that one, but Chief Beam's, Sheriff Ayers, anything that had a contract increase. I can tell you, in their budget, for example, we know for a fact there's a 5% increase to our janitorial contract.
And that was a, that was a big part of that.
Right, I'm just saying, I mean, those are things that we did put in there.
That was supposed to be cheaper for us to go to contracts on that, right?
Well, I don't...
That was a several-year ago conversation, I'll move on.
I don't know the whole, I mean, I didn't do the analysis on that part.
Would you like our building?
No, I wouldn't. But it looks like, like, public safety, where is that, Mr. Adams?
I'm trying to get to it. All right, so while you're looking, can I, all right, so under, under community development projects, that budget on here, this Brockman Park recoupment, please educate me on that.
Let me take it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so that is a really, really old agreement when Brockman Park was built, that the town fronted the construction of the infrastructure, the roads and stuff. And so when we get tax revenue, we have to turn it back over to the town until that debt, so to speak. It's not really debt, but until that cost is recouped by the town. We've had some meetings with them because I brought up the fact that they no longer charge realis- it's supposed to be their real estate tax increase plus our real estate tax increase. But they don't charge real estate anymore. So they're calculating it now. So we make up, they send us a bill, but what happened was is there's a piece of property, a business up there that is no longer a nonprofit. They're a for-profit, so our tax increased to $65,000.
It's an agreement from, I believe, early 2000s. I think it's 2002. We actually re-reviewed it about a year, year and a half ago with the town manager, Ms. McGuffin. That agreement was a board, a binding agreement that the board approved in the early 2000s.
Okay.
And we, and the balance on that, I would have to go back and get you the exact number, but it is still well over $2 million. So that is gonna be there for a long time.
Jesus, Pete.
It used to be about $25,000, and last year it jumped to 65, when the facility out there changed from nonprofit to private.
I'm sorry, I was looking at public sector stuff. So explain that to me, why we're paying the town?
Because they fronted the money to create the industrial park.
Yeah, okay.
Our board in the early 2000s agreed and bonded us to that.
Because we would receive tax revenue from that property. And so any tax revenue received on that property goes back to the town until that cost is recouped.
Yeah.
So it's been a very little bit of money for a long time. It did jump last year, so that's why we revisited it So it's, it's, it's been a very little bit of money for a long time, it did jump last year, so that's why we revisited it and talked to, met with the town manager and tried to figure out how we were moving forward, because it it seems like it's been hanging around for a long time.
And did they have any ideas for moving forward, that something that seemed a little bit more reasonable?
No, we really didn't get any, I I mean, we we reworked the calculation, so more will come down on their side as well as our side. It's, um, it's just been around for a long time, it took me a long time to even understand it, it seemed kinda out there, but.
So you say we still owe roughly two million dollars?
Yeah, I can get you all the, the correct number.
If y'all wanna see the agreement, we can send it to you.
I will get the latest one that they sent me and that way you know exactly how much it is.
I'm not sure if I'm glad I asked that question or not. I'm leaning more toward not.
Always complicated sometimes.
Yeah, okay, um, let's talk about debt service. So, going back to Davenport, we're talking about the Gateway Project. In our budget, we're showing ninety-nine thousand, five hundred dollars in debt service. Did I not understand that correctly, that the authority is responsible for that debt service?
We still have to pay the interest this year when the, when the the.
So the county's paying interest for the service authorities?
That was agreed upon two years ago.
Holy moly, this just keeps getting better.
That interim financing comes due next year, and it will be up to this board or whoever's on the board to, um, decide how they, whether you all participate in it, or the service authority needs to take care of it on their own.
Okay, so let's move down that same chart right there to school debt principal.
Hang on, I gotta find that real quick.
It's page seventeen.
Alrighty.
So, per your numbers, as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, we had already spent six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that line item, where we budgeted three sixty.
I needed to realign some payments, they got credited to the wrong place.
So what does that mean?
That six twenty actually needs to go up to, um, the rest of it needs to go up to the two sixty that isn't showing page. The VPA, VPSA twenty twenty. It's about halfway up the page.
So two sixty of the six twenty goes up to VPSA?
Yeah, the debt payments are wired and coded through the cash receipts program, and we, um, I I need to fix it, because it went to the wrong, those payments should have been split and they were not.
Alright, and the same for the school debt interest?
Yes, a little bit of that needs to come out and move up there. To, and I have done that entry in January to fix it. But yes, and then some of the other interest payments will be later. We still have some that are due in May.
So, Mr. Martin, I feel like this is probably, I I heard your comments a moment ago, but I think, I think we need to talk about this. Yeah, we, you and I both will, uh, will will kinda hug this and try to, and protect it with that one eighteen that he put up there? I- is it not worth some discussion on that?
Not until we go back and look at the overall budget, again, look at, look at last year's budget, fiscal year twenty-five, okay? And then look at what the department requested, alright? And then you cut what they requested, which pretty much across the board is way more than what last year's budget was. And I don't know about, all I know is my experience, thirty-one years. And I know when I got my budget instructions this year, it was submit a flat budget, and a flat budget meant what? Flat, okay? So we're not in a position to fund all these little things, okay? So if it's not inflationary, don't send it to us. Don't be doing all these other things and then come in and say, oh, well, we can't give our employees a three percent cost of living increase. Oh, we gotta pay more insurance, alright? We did this one year before, Dean Rogers was sitting up here, I said, if you want a cost of living increase, you gotta go back and look. And they sure enough found it. So you can't increase the budget across the board and then cut what was increased and make it out like, oh, it's so bad, you you understand what I'm telling?
Absolutely, yeah.
So you need to send every last department back and start at no more than what they
Yes, sir.
was approved last year, that's my opinion, guys.
And I I hear you, and I've picked this thing apart, and I know y'all can find it hard for me to believe in me to say this, but I feel like the expenditure side is pretty dead-on conservative.
I don't, not if you look at what, I mean, ju- just take an example, Chris. I mean, okay, let's just take, uh.
Alright, so while you're looking for something.
Well, human resources, well, that's not a great example, but we approved three thirty-six, well, they up three thirty-seven, five twenty-five. That's not a real good example. Information technology, seven ninety-three, they requested nine sixty-seven, cut it down to eight eighty-seven. All those little increases add up. This isn't the year to be making little incremental increases unless they're absolutely necessary.
If I could speak up and just point out some of the conversations that I know both myself and Ms. McBride had with some staff, and I don't wanna call anyone specific out, but I know that there are some, there were some, there were some places, um, I mean, I can be specific, you if you want me to.
They're your staff, not mine.
Well, I understand that, I wanna try to protect you to some extent, uh, but there there were, there were things that, um, require higher levels of service and require, there's some, some, Chief Beam has some state code regulations that he needs more because of it. So I just, I I recognize for my staff, there are some challenges that they're facing, but, Mr. Martin, I heard you loud and clear.
Well, but I I think, I think we'd also be, uh, Mr. Martin, for, so take public safety for an example. This is, is BRIMs now public, that's public knowledge, correct, uh, Mr. uh, Chief Beam? Alright, so, the BRIMs office in Lynchburg, which is our regional OEMS council, Office of EMS, excuse me, I'm quick using acronyms. Office of EMS Council is being closed effective June the thirtieth, correct? Alright, so with that, where you guys can understand, through that office, they would fund certain programs for each locality. For example, Chief Beam has several programs that is being currently paid for through the BRIMs office, through Office of EMS. There's no secret about this, the situation that the Virginia Department of Health is in with the Virginia Office of EMS. However, that council's going away, we're no longer gonna get that funding to be able to support these programs that are mandated. They're unfunded mandates, and unfortunately, it's not a dad-gum thing we can do about it. So that's one example for him, and I'm not sure, Chief, how much those, because it was three issues, right, three items?
Well, if we could, I'd like for Mr. Beam to come up and, I mean, what, I've told you in the presentation, one of our large drivers, uh, was public safety, it's three hundred and seventy-two thousand, so, Chief Beam, would you explain some of the reasons why?
I just, well, I was just gonna say, I think we can do what Tom has suggested and look and see what we can come up with in that avenue, and then go from there and decide our alternative.
I'm not, I'm not.
We made an attempt to do that before we brought that to you, we we didn't bring this to you without putting a lot of effort and giving you.
Yeah, but see, all we see is the end number.
I understand that, I understand, well, could I give you a, a example from Mr. Beam?
That'd be great.
So, uh, for example, pharmacies, you all know, last year pharmacy went away. Um, this year we have to continue that and pick up the cost of medications, which is the fifty thousand dollars. So that was, again, unfunded, unfunded mandate from FDA and DEA. Um, some of the costs that we're looking at this year include, um, our EMS reporting, which is the ESO that we use. Um, the state requires us to report it, requires us to report it at a high level, ninety-eight percent or better. But now, um, funding for that program's going away, so we now have to pay for that internally. Um, our protocol app, we're trying to make provisions to be able to cover that, um, because right now it's through BRIMs. If we get rolled into another, um, regional council, we don't know what that would look like. Um, our hand-tevy app, uh, which is our pediatric stuff, all that was being funded by the state, so those are some of the things that for us.
And look, Chief, I'm not picking on you.
No, go, no, you're good.
He he forced you up here.
No, you're good.
Last year, you're.
Who's he, Dave?
Him.
Oh, Jeremy.
Even though he's the one that made our insurance go up. One point one. That hadn't been, that hadn't been seen yet, okay, one point, last year was one point one eight three million, right?
Or what's that, Chief, I'm sorry.
Public Safety Operations, I'm assuming that's you, alright? Year-to-date is one point two eight, all these other appropriations we've had to make for overtime and this and that, right? I'm guessing that's what that includes.
Well, we paid a lot of, so, even though this was a a snapshot at fifty percent, we pay a lot of stuff in the first quarter, like our radio boards and different things.
That's fine, but it's still more in your budget, alright?
No, sir.
No?
No, we, uh.
One point two is more than one point one, right?
Which one are you looking at, Public Safety or?
Public Safety Operations.
Okay.
Um, for some reason, motor vehicle has four fifty-nine put in there, I'm not sure if that may be what's driving that up, Chief, which.
In January, we appro- or, or, no, we just appropriated the grant we got, so I've gotta clean that up.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be in there, that four fifty-nine, sir.
Yeah, we've gotta clean that up.
Sorry.
Four hundred and fifty-nine thousand?
For an ambulance. But we got a grant for part of it.
Okay, can we agree your budget last year was one point one eight three million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then you requested this year one point eight one eight.
Uh, yes, sir, um.
And then you went back and cut it to one point three twenty-seven nine forty-eight.
Yeah, my numbers look a little different here, but yes, sir.
We removed the ambulance.
Okay, so, do we have right information or not?
Yes, you do.
Okay, so, your budget is still roughly, what, a hundred and, what, fifty-some-odd thousand dollars more than it was last year? Is that what the pharmacy costs and? And look, I'm not, I'm not, I don't need to put you on the spot right now, it's my intent, my.
You have pharmacy, you have the volunteer rescue that was moved over there for maintaining the Manellson Building, we moved the funding over there. That, that's almost a hundred thousand, isn't it?
Well, no, that's like twenty thousand for the.
Yes, twenty thousand.
My point, my point is this, okay, go back, start at last year's expenditures. If it's something that needs to be like a pharmacy, spell it out and let us look at it. Because I would really like to get our employees their three percent COLA, and I would really like to keep their insurance costs low. Alright, and have you even figured in the schools one point two million dollars that they want?
No. No, they haven't made enough formal requests yet, um.
There sure was in the newspaper today.
They haven't come to us, yeah, they're they're doing a workshop this coming week.
Yeah, so that's another one point two million.
You might wanna save them time.
But you see where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
I do, and I completely agree with you, because, you know, you got, everybody's got their own sacred cow, mine is, um, I would like, really, really like to see our employees get a COLA, I'd really like to see us do something meaningful with insurance. And maybe it is gonna be a slight premium increase to make it easier on everybody else. But the one thing I will remind this board is that I was here when we cut and cut and cut, and we got so far behind the eight ball, and we didn't have, we had vehicles that were becoming inoperable. We just got really, really behind, and it took us forever, almost, I would say, till a year before last, to catch up on that. And I don't wanna see us go backwards again, and I don't know how you get there, but some smart people in this room. I mean, we had to start buying three, uh, fire engines at a time, because we didn't have any, that was hard. That when we had them, but they needed to be upgraded.
Well, that's the, you know, you're talking about the capital.
Yeah, we haven't even got to something that'll cap it yet.
I'm just thinking about that.
What you're saying, and I agree with you, so.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chair, can can I, and I'm not trying to drag us out, but I I do need some comfort about some revenues on the revenue side. And I guess we can move on from there. I just wanna understand, Ms. McBride, from trending, because, I mean, I I know things are gonna change based on like, when taxes are collected and things of that nature, but if we look at our numbers as of twelve thirty-one twenty-four, and we looked with what our projected, well, what our, what our projected FY twenty-five was, right? So if you, if you, for an example, it's a couple biggies on here, so, the, so the, the meals tax, that's, that's one that really raised a red flag with me, we we budgeted one point five eight million. But as of twelve thirty-one, we're only at five seventy-nine. So, that's not gonna change a lot, correct?
Yeah, it's all, all, all taxes are at least one or two months behind. Depending on where they, the meals tax is at least one month behind.
So the twelve thirty-one date is really not twelve thirty-one?
It it's what we've gotten through twelve thirty-one, we'll, we'll, we'll have accruals at the end of the year to put in July, June's numbers, and possibly some of these have May's numbers that have to be added in come July.
Okay, that, that's really confusing.
That is four months' worth, probably, maybe five, um, but no more than that.
Can we get him a better depiction of what that is?
I can give you the list, I mean, I can print it out of there.
I'm just saying, but, I mean.
But when you, when you collect taxes in, in August, it's for July.
Alright, but doesn't, is it meal taxes, I mean, ain't, that, that like, like a, that doesn't come in incrementally, does it?
Yeah, you have one, first through the twentieth.
Of each month?
Mm-hmm.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it's, it's kind of real time, unlike collecting personal property taxes or real estate taxes, I mean, it comes in a lump sum.
But it's not the current month. What was collected in December was for meals paid for in November.
So you're missing a month.
And I don't catch it until the end of the fiscal year. The same thing with like your, your state revenues, your shared revenues for like the Commonwealth Attorney, the the Constitutionals. Anything that comes from the state is two months behind, sales tax, and any reimbursables from them, anything that comes from the state, DSS is always two months behind.
So if you ran a year-to-date one right now, it'd be missing February.
Correct.
Alright, when we're talking about personal property, where is the PPTRA numbers factored into these numbers? What, what category is this in, because I know that's been a stumbling block in the past. Where, where is that?
It is removed from the personal property tax line, and it is in the categor- non-categorical aid line. I do have my calculations on, I'll be glad to share them with you, if you would like.
What else falls in, do you know what else falls in that category?
Non-categorical?
Yeah.
It is like your motor vehicle carriers tax, your auto rental tax, your, um, mobile home tax, titling tax. Um, peer-to-peer vehicles now, I'd have to get you a full list, but I think that's the main ones. And actually, now I put communication tax in there, because it's actually a state revenue, it's not a local revenue. When we realigned the system, we moved that to be a state revenue, which is where it's supposed to be.
Okay.
But it is deceiving during the year, because.
Yeah, this is pretty deceiving, because one would think by looking at this, if if we're gonna trend, and at least what I was used to was, is if if we're looking at numbers effective twelve thirty-one, this, these should be the numbers that you've collected up to twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
It is what we've collected, but we're always missing months, and that's the hard part to do. For you all to, to see, because I can't do it until the end of the year. I do it in July, I actually do it in August, because that's when the state money comes out, report comes out, so I know where it came from.
Yeah, I understand what she's saying, I get it, yeah.
Let me ask one more thing.
I'm done.
I'm sorry, alright, so on the, um, revenue and projection summary, so you've got fiscal year twenty-four, we're in fiscal year twenty-five now, right? And you've got projected, could we get the adopted, what we adopted as our?
Yes, sir, I'll make me a note.
That'd be helpful, just to me, anyway. Thank you, I know you guys have worked hard on this one. I know you're gonna work harder.
Jeremy's turn.
Okay, um, we're, we're gonna, we have a budget workshop on March the twelfth. Um, again, we hope to have, um, the, there's new health insurance rates, so we can give you a better picture. Um, I understand your marching orders on the O and M budget, um, we'll bring that back to you as well. Is there anything else we can do for you between now and our budget workshop?
Hold up, that was mine. I didn't hear the rest of them say do that.
I, I agree.
Don't do it just for me, I mean.
No, I, I completely agree with what you're saying.
Okay, well, I guess it is.
Before, did you have anything else to say, Mr. Bryant?
No, I finished my presentation.
Alright, um, if there's, I mean, we've got a lot of people here that do a lot of things for this county, if there's anybody out there, any staff that wants to say something, now's your time. If there's anybody out there, any staff, that wants to say something, now's your time. Well, that opportunity, it hasn't passed.
I can assure you of that.
Yeah, they're gonna come right on up here.
Yes.
Probably need to open both those doors where they can get out of here quicker.
Did you want to say something? Okay. Yeah, come up here so we can all hear you.
She's a brave soul.
Unless it's bad against Tom Martin.
All right, and put, put the microphone down so...
We're all in this together.
I was unable to submit, I'm not gonna say I was unable to, but when the supplemental budgets were due, we were in the thick of early voting. That's no excuse for my department, but even if I had turned it in, I would not, at the time, I did not have any needs. After the November election, we start to have equipment fail. After the November election, I had four pieces of equipment fail. Last week, we had the company of our voting machines come and do preventive maintenance. We have five more machines that are now unoperable. What I have requested is, we would need fifteen new voting machines. But my suggestion is to do this in a phased approach. We would buy five machines each year. First year, it's approximately forty-one thousand. Next year, it would be thirty-six thousand, the following year, thirty-six thousand. The first year, there's a, um, a fee that's involved in it. You all know very well how important elections are because you are elected officials. And we work hard all year long to make sure that everything is done properly. We have, you know, whether there's one person on the ballot or twenty piece, people on the ballot, we do the same, it takes the same amount of work. Um, I would like for you to reconsider, possibly, um, we did cut it from the budget when I talked with Stacy. But we're looking at the, the eight machines to be repaired, they're about a thousand dollars apiece. We have two elections coming up. We have, you know, all the touch writers, the handicap accessible, they don't get used. So those, those are things that we're not seeing fail as often. I did have to send two for repair because of the operating systems. Um, there was something wrong with that. But the, the, the gold, piece of gold that we have to have is those scanners that count those ballots. Without those, we have to rely on a human to count them, and the percentage of error is way higher with a human counting them than a machine. Um, so I want to, you know, I, like you said, I'm brave. I didn't think I was going to say anything, but I wanted to just bring that to the table to think about, um, if not in three years, or we don't know how many more machines will fail, if we do send them for repair, there's a significant cost because it gets more and more expensive, the, the more that's wrong with them, the more expensive it is. So it's, it's becoming what's, you know, are we gonna buy used tires to put on the car? Are we gonna buy a set of new tires to put on the car? You, you know, we want to see what kind of, we're at a ten-year mark with our current machines, um, and that is approximately the average lifespan from what I have, um, heard from other vendors.
Yeah, and we, we hear everything you're saying, and I spent more time with you in twenty twenty-five than I want to spend with you again, so, um, I can...
That was rude.
I encourage each of you to come and see what goes on in our office.
You gotta see it to believe it.
Yeah, but the machines are what I'm concerned with because it's all about perception. And if our citizens see that they're at the, the polls and the machines fail...
It takes all the confidence out of the process.
It takes every bit of it, and we're getting more and more scrutinized. It's not getting easier for our department, and we work more than twice a year. You know, so every day, it's something else, you know, the security of elections, and this is just a piece of the puzzle that, um, like I said, I presented it, it's not one lump sum as a purchase because the machines that we, it's the same vendor. The machines have what's called backwards technology, so they will work. It's not like we're buying a, a new version. It's a, an updated version of what we already have.
Mr. Bryant, can you get with the registrar and see what we can do?
Yes, ma'am.
See what's within the realm of the possible?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You were very brave. Anyone else? All right, board members, anything?
The only thing I would say, Ms. Tucker, is once we come back, what are we coming back on the twelfth?
Uh, Mar, yes, we have another workshop, March twelfth at three P.M. Yes, sir.
All right. I'm gonna be talking out of both sides of my mouth, but...
Again?
What? You were just rude to that lady. So if, if a department, because Ms. McBride, she made a good point a moment ago as far as looking at each department. If you're looking at the, if we're comparing the, use the young lady at the registrar's office. If we're comparing that to public safety as far as these budgets go, I think it would be beneficial for everybody to understand, and the last thing I want to do is drag everybody back up here again. But I would task Mr. Bryant with those departments that have increases to have them here on the twelfth to discuss, I think that's only fair to the department head. They are managing their budget, right? And they, we, we have entrusted in them to be department heads and constitutional officers. So I, I think it would be important, if they can't cut anything, to, to be able for us to do our due diligence, to have them explain that. I just think that's fair.
Uh, and I don't disagree with you a bit, and the other thing I would say to the board and to us is that, um, we need to decide what our priorities are. I know I've got mine. I feel like, you know, I know most people's, but you need to share that with Mr. Bryant. What are your priorities? What can you absolutely not live with, you know?
Well, and I, I think another part of that is, is once we see our supplementals and, and CIP.
Yeah.
When, when do you anticipate that, Mr. Bryant?
Actually, um, at the March eighteenth meeting, we anticipate that. This might be a good segue. I'd like to, I, I have, I have an idea that I came up with yesterday, um, when working with Ms. McBride. I, in regards to CIP and supplemental, what we've done in the past is we've used historical data to make decisions. We've used data on when we have leftover money from the years past on how much we think we're going to spend for the future, okay? Mr. Adams, you brought that up at last year's budget meetings. I heard you loud and clear. One of the things that I would like to suggest is that for CIP and supplemental request, I would like to bring them to you for you to rank them, for you to prioritize them. And then I would ask us to set them aside until September, okay? Because then I would like to come back to you in September and say, hey, board, this is how much money you actually have left over, not what we used on historical data, because that, that catches up to us, because we run into things like rising fuel costs, rising electricity costs, rising, uh, cars that were getting wrecked that we have to fix. Um, I would like to ask you only to prioritize the CIP and supplemental this year. I'd like to change our process, and I'd like to bring that to you in September. And in September, I'm gonna have an actual number and say, this is how much was left over. If you want to spend more than that, then you know you're getting into the unobligated general fund. So I intend to bring you the list March eighteenth, but I want to propose that. You don't need to answer this right now. That's my proposal to you on how we change the supplemental and CIP process. Again, I don't need an answer right now, but I ask you to think about it and let me know in the future if you like that idea or if you want to keep doing the way we were doing it, or if you have another idea on how to do it, but that's my proposal to you. We'll send it out on the twelfth for you to rank, yeah.
Which is late this year, isn't it? Don't we usually rank the CIP and the supplemental before we get into anything?
It is later, you're right. Um, yes, sir. We were told last year to come to you with proposed revenues first so we knew what kind of money we had before we were ranking and trying to come up with what we could spend. We're, we're trying to, we're trying to change our process and try to get your revenues in first so you can understand what you, you can spend. Instead of what we did before was we asked you to rank them and not worry about the cost. And now I'm saying we're gonna worry about the cost.
All ready to go?
Yeah.
Is there a motion? All right, board members, is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Pose no. Staff, thank you. Appreciate it.